I'd like to call the Waukesha County Council meeting to order September 24th, 2013. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Sam Crawford?
Here.
Kathy Kerschner?
Here.
Bill Knutson?
Here.
Pete Cremmon?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
Here.
All right, will everybody stand and join me in saluting our flag?
I salute you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with its standards, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and I'll remind everybody to check your cellphone and make sure you've got it on silent or vibration mode, and if you're going to be handing out paperwork to the council tonight, please make sure you leave a copy down here with our clerk for the record. From the committee of the whole, today we had a discussion with Chief Civil Deputy Prosecutor Daniel Gibson regarding potential litigation regarding Swift Creek that took place in executive session. We also had a strategy planning discussion and positions to be taken regarding collective bargaining per RCW 42.30.140 (for) parentheses A, which also took place in executive session. We have a special presentation tonight. We've got our Behavioral Revenue Advisory Committee 2013 Quarterly Report to the Council. And it looks like, is it Dave that's giving that? Okay.
Well, I'm not Dave.
Yeah, you don't look like Dave.
No, I don't. My name is Benita Bowen, and I have the pleasure of serving as the vice chair of the Behavioral Revenue Advisory Committee. And many of you were there five years ago when we set this thing going, and our desire was to take one-tenth of one percent and invest it in programs and practices that would reduce the costs to government, hospitals, et cetera. And I have the pleasure today of introducing Bruce Van Glup, who is the District Court probation and administrator, who's going to talk about a very successful program that has been used with these dollars.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Van Glup, and I am the District Court probation administrator. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the behavioral health unit in probation. Over the years, there have been a growing number of court clients and probationers identified with severe mental illness. Due to large caseloads, probation has historically focused on holding the client accountable to the specific conditions of the court order and less on the other needs of the client that are limiting their success. It became evident there were clients with mental health conditions that were using a disproportionate amount of the jail, medical, and other services in our community. They were simply falling through the cracks. The behavioral health unit was created in response to the needs of these clients. The unit was established using the one-tenth of one percent behavioral health sales tax revenue in January of 2010. The purpose of the unit within the District Court probation is to, one, ensure that each probationer is compliant with their court ordered conditions; two, provide enhanced supervision to assist them in successfully accessing services that will improve their quality of life; and, three, ultimately reduce their use of resources such as the jail and medical facilities, and hopefully reduce recidivism. Probation officers assigned to this unit were able to work with clients in ways that are unique and different from those that work with a more generalized caseload. Many common diagnoses seen on the unit is schizophrenia, bipolar, depression, PTSD particularly among veterans, severe anxiety disorders, and substance abuse. Probation officers receive special training that help them understand mental health issues presented by the clients. The caseload is approximately one-third of the standard caseload, with each officer having approximately eighty to a hundred cases. Those supervised by the unit are able to receive intense supervision with many clients reporting daily or weekly rather than monthly or less often. We've had clients request to meet with probation officers more often than is required, and we've also had clients request that additional substance abuse testing such as breath and urinalysis tests be conducted, and that would be above and beyond what we would normally have conducted with the individual. The probation officers are better able to monitor medication compliance with pharmacies. The behavioral health unit probation officers meet monthly with Dr. Art Davis from the University of Washington, who advises them on how to develop strategies to assist the most difficult clients and the unique needs that they present. And this consultation services that are provided by Dr. Davis are also paid for by the same mental health sales tax. Many of the clients see their probation officers as part of a support structure that helps them to be successful. We've seen great success with clients assigned to this unit, and I decide not to overwhelm you with numbers or statistics, but I do have one. The current rate for satisfactory closure of probation with these clients is seventy-five percent. When we looked at these same clients that had been on probation previously before the unit was established, their satisfactory closure rate was twenty-eight percent. So we're seeing really a great increase in people being able to successfully complete probation. I do have one example of a client that we have diagnosed with schizoaffective disorder, PTSD, entered the behavioral health unit in February of 2011. He was put on probation for his fourth DUI, but he'd been arrested a total of fifty-three times in his life and spent months in jail, months in psychiatric wards, months in and out of hospitals, had been on probation three times previously and had been revoked each time, and of course, there was a jail sentence imposed with each of those revocations. This client frequented the emergency room nearly monthly, using, as a result of him stopping his medications. He had a very tragic history. He had a problem with voices in his head and had been suicidal. He also abused cocaine, methamphetamines, and alcohol. His probation officer from the unit began to meet with him daily. Daily meetings did not continue for two years, but they were a couple of times a week, then down to weekly, then down to a little bit less often than that. We were able to support him in taking his medications, keeping appointments with his mental health therapist. By receiving the assistance and acquiring housing and other services that he needed, he found he could manage his mental health condition through the counseling and medications. He completed the probation in February of this year, it was two years, and he's not been to an emergency room or had a police contact in over two years. He's now clean and sober for eighteen months, and this is a client that stops by frequently just to visit with his former probation officer, touch base, and feels it's a safe place for him to be. It's amazing the results that we've seen like this when clients are in an environment that supports them in management of their mental health. I want to thank all of you for supporting not just the behavioral health unit, but the probation department as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
I feel like we should applaud.
Yes.
The credit goes to the officers that are working directly with them, so they work very hard with them.
Can I ask Bruce a question?
Councilmember Mann?
I just recently became aware of something called Mental Health Court, sort of like the drug court, and the Mental Health Court is in Seattle is the one that I heard about and looked into briefly. Doesn't sound like what you're doing here is all that far of a cry from that type of a program. I mean, I realize there's some differences there, but could you just talk a little bit about that, and is mental health, something, Mental Health Court something we could do here? And...
You know, I think that it's very possible we could do it here. There's a number of them scattered around the state. There's a lot of specialty courts. There's DUI courts, there's veteran courts, there's a number of these specialty courts, but my personal opinion is if there's one court you're going to have that will make the biggest impact on the greatest number of people in need, it's a mental health court. So I would like to see it established in our community. I know that the Health Department has been working on researching some alternatives and some options, different models that are out there, but the one common theme that I've heard in all of the discussions is that those clients, now whether it be housed in Bellingham Municipal Court or Waukesha County District Court, that the clients that are going through a mental health court would be supervised by this behavioral health unit. It makes perfect sense because, quite frankly, we're seeing a lot of them already. We may be seeing all of the ones that would go through. We're already established, we're already, the staff is trained and ready to go, and is currently working with that particular population. So I know the Health Department is working on that, and I can't tell you the exact status of what the research is. I know they've been actively working on looking at different models and what might work in our community, so...
Okay. Thanks, Bruce.
Councilmember Cremmon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to provide a little information that's germane to Councilmember Mann's interest in mental health. I had the opportunity, as a member of the large urban county caucus associated with the National Association of Counties, to go to Cook County, Illinois. This was probably five or six years ago, where they have a very robust mental health, a mental health court that is a resounding success and is highly touted throughout the nation. They really trailblazed the mental health court issue and process, and it, they have very impressive statistics similar to those that you provided us this evening. So I think that there is a real possibility and potential benefits of further exploring and ultimately actually, you know, having a mental health court here in Waukesha County. I think it would really be very beneficial.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. That moves us into our public hearings. We've got one public hearing tonight, and it's a resolution on the matter of the Waukesha County Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for the years 2014 through 2019. And is there a, let's see, is there a sign-up sheet? Let's see, we have an empty sign-up sheet. Did anybody want to speak to the council on the six-year transportation improvement plan? All right. Seeing nobody, Councilmember Brenner?
I'll move approval, but I have some questions for Mr. Rutan.
We'll have staff come down.
It's kind of about placement only. Now, when you look at the first chart of the order of each one, we made two amendments, but they're not in there, they're at the end, so...
They should be. Project number sixteen...
Right.
Is Slater Road Connector northwest to SR 539.
Yeah.
And then the U Street Road was put in on as number eighteen.
Well, eighteen, we said seventeen, but eighteen's fine. But it's like on one of the first pages, page 165. I was wondering why we didn't have...
Yeah, that is...
Because it's an old one?
Yeah, Joe Rutan with Public Works. The document on page 165 was as it was brought forward to the committee. The changes were made. I did not change any of the backup documentation.
Okay. But those amendments were recommended for approval for the full council to add the Slater Road Connector and the U Street Road work as to be looked at, to see, you know, not necessarily to move any further than that, but to spend some money to look at the pros and cons of doing both those.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the six-year transportation improvement program?
Before we vote...
Yeah. Councilmember Mann?
Actually, I'm good.
Councilmember Weimer? Okay. All right. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes seven to zero as amended in committee. Thank you very much. And that moves us into our open session. During an open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue relevant to county business. Does anybody wish to address the council? Come on up. Come on up, speak into the microphone, state your name for the record. You'll be given thirty seconds when you're almost done.
Hi, my name is Ray Barribo, B-A-R-I-B-E-A-U. You're probably wondering, what's Jail Guy doing here tonight? Well, it turns out the behavioral health presentation was something I wanted to hear, and I'm really glad to hear that that kind of system is working and working well. Your question, Councilwoman Mann, about expanding it is wonderful. I remember five years ago when I testified when that passed, I looked Sam Crawford in the eye and I said, "I am a conservative. Passing this tax is a no-brainer." And it passed, and I'm so happy for that because I like things that are local, local taxes where we can see the results as we did tonight. And I also see it in the jail with some of the new staff that's there to assist the mentally That tenth of a percent sales tax stream for mental health and chemical dependency, like I said, I've seen the effects in the jail, the reentry specialists for the mentally ill, that has a significant impact for some people, and it is accountable. That's the other thing. We heard an accountability report tonight. That's much better than sending our money to Washington DC and then getting grants. Oof. Flies away. The other thing I want to comment on is there's letters to the editor, people that are saying, "Ah, we don't need a new jail and that, we ought to take the money and put it in mental health." Well, it's not an either-or. We have two revenue streams. We have the tenth of a percent for mental health and chemical dependency. We have a tenth of a percent currently to support the jail and a new jail. That may not be enough, but the fact that we can currently bring in $3.3 million a year roughly for mental health and chemical dependency, and we've got really good people in this community that are studying the use of those funds to assist the mentally ill, and by the way, I have a friend of mine right now that's in the psych ward at the hospital. He's self-reported. He's being evaluated to get his medication rebalanced. He's also an associate with me in the jail ministry. I'm looking forward to having him back in the jail with us on Friday nights. It's a wonderful story. Self-reported, got himself in there, and because he had surgery in June, I'm sure the medication they gave him for some serious surgery messed with his brain chemistry, but the pros are working on it, and that's such a good story. And there could be more stories of victories as we use this funding to expand the programs that are being talked about by the county health department and some of the other mental health professionals. Thank you for your time. Continue the good work.
Thank you, Ray. All right, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council Steve Harris, Waukesha County, City of Bellingham. I want to echo Ray's comments and some of the earlier comments on the mental health. I can tell you, as a law enforcement professional, the statutes allow us to specifically take a person who is not accused of a felony or a nonviolent crime directly to a mental health facility, a triage facility, or a crisis facility rather than jail. We just simply need the place to bring them. And we're starting down that road with a triage facility next to our center now. I would encourage you to expand upon that and give us more resources to take people that are in crisis in mental health issues rather than jail because everybody can agree it's not the right place for them. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Yoshi Revell. Thank you, members of the audience, and staff, and county council for your attention. I support the idea of a mental health court. One problem I did have with what I've heard so far is the idea of medication. What somebody who's dealing with a mental health problem, and I can speak from personal experience, is dealing with is finding a safe place to cry. We've forgotten that one of the most healing things a human being can do is shed tears. It's something that nature gave us, or if you want to say God gave us. It is a natural healer. The medications don't do that. They don't heal the emotional pain, they mask it for a little while. We need a safe place to cry, and we need to tell people it's okay to let that pain out. It's okay to let those tears out. That's how we require, re-acquire, a sense of mental sanity. Thank you for your time, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Next speaker, please.
Greg Brown, Waukesha County. It's kind of quiet here tonight.
It is quiet and uplifting.
And uplifting, wow, maybe. I wanted to talk a little bit about the, I think, I gotta find the number here, it's AB 2013-309, the interlocal agreement with Everson on the property. I was here for the finance committee meeting when they first brought it up, and actually talked to the mayor of Everson, had a couple of questions, and today it kind of was just a no-brainer, it just kind of went. But it's kind of been an issue with me because it's kind of a signal. I sit in these meetings time after time, and we're always fighting over development in the cities. This land was plotted for forty-eight residential homes. It's not all floodlands, I remember the maps. The market dropped, so it made this land available as probably a foreclosure to the credit union, so the city's going to take advantage of that, and maybe that's a good thing. But where are they going to replace these forty-eight residences? Where's the tax base going to come back for that? How do they do these things? How do we continue to build these parks and make all those things nice and continue to take the property in our cities and then complain while everybody moves to the county? So that's just my comment. It doesn't make sense sometimes, the things we do and the things we profess that we're going to do. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Does anybody else wish to speak to us in open session? All right, seeing nobody, I'll close the open session, and thank you all for coming tonight. We'll move on to the finance committee, and Councilmember Mann?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had four items on our consent agenda. All four items passed with a recommendation for approval, and I move approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved for approval. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes seven to zero.
The next item is an ordinance amending the Waukesha County budget, the tenth request in the amount of $832,504. We recommended approval on this one, three to zero, and I move approval.
All right, is there any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Bill Knutson?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item number two.
And item number two is a little complicated, so bear with me, but it's an approval for the executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between the county and the city of Everson and the Waukesha County Flood Control Zone District for the purchase and subsequent management of property consistent with agreed restrictive covenant for flood control purposes in the amount of $342,000. That's the total amount. We're splitting it up, half, or not half, but it's $118,000 for the Flood Control Zone District and the balance for, out of Conservation Futures. So we need two separate motions, and I actually don't have that document.
So I have it here.
So if you can take over, Madam Chair, that would be great.
Okay. So this item requires two votes, one as the council and one as the Waukesha County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. And since this body serves as both of those entities, we will start with the vote of the council. The first vote will be on the approval of an expenditure of the $228,000 from the Conservation Futures Fund. So Councilmember Mann, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I move approval of that, to that board.
All right. So the motion to approve the expenditure of $228,000 from the Conservation Futures Fund is made by Councilmember Mann. Is there any discussion on that? And we are acting as the council, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven to zero. The second motion we need to make is the approval of expenditure of $114,000 from the Flood Control Zone District Funds.
I move approval.
Okay. Councilmember Mann with approval. Anybody else have discussion on that?
I've never seen one of these who would disagree with their thing.
Yeah, somebody might disagree with themselves, that's good. All right, so we are acting as the Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven to zero.
Can I add something? I probably should have said this during the motion, but to address Mr. Brown's concern, I believe this property was considered in the 2009 population projections, and Everson actually did add urban growth area in that process, but I'm glad you brought it up. As we go into the 2016 process, we'll remember this one and be sure to ask if that's been included in those calculations by the city. Right.
Okay. We've got an item from the Planning and Development Committee, Councilmember Knutson.
Yes, and this is a little complicated, too. In planning and development today, we had one thing on our docket, an ordinance adopting amendments to the Point Roberts Character Plan. It came with a three-to-zero recommendation, but what we're recommending is that we forward this for concurrent review. So I move that we forward for concurrent review, the ordinance adopting the amendments to the Point Roberts Character Plan.
All right. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Bill Knutson?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero, and that will be forwarded for concurrent review when we do all of our comprehensive plan updates early next year. All right. So we've got introduction items, numbers one through three. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept.
Councilmember Brenner moves to accept the three introduction items. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the introduction items, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes seven to zero. Let's see, Councilmember Weimer, I'm going to call on you. Did you want to give an update from Natural Resources Committee today?
We had a discussion about the Nuxak Loop Trail this morning for about forty-five minutes. It's kind of a vision for a trail that would connect Everson and Linden and Ferndale and Bellingham in a big loop. It's a long ways from being done, but they're trying to take bite-sized chunks out of it to adopt it, and it's a good plan, but it's got a long way to go.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Knutson, any other business?
Nope.
Anybody have any other business? Councilmember Brenner?
Just one piece of other business, and I'm sorry Joe Rutan left, but maybe Health Department would actually be helpful, and I'm going to put this in like committee, but there's a person who needed to do a septic design system, septic system, and have it installed. He went through all the motions, paid all the fees, lots of money, and got on, you know, got approved for the design, and then the Lummi Sewer District decided they were going to supply that whole area with sewer. So he was put off and put off and put off for, I want to say, three or four years by the Lummi Sewer District, and then they suddenly changed their mind. So now he's got, his permit has run out for the design, and it's the same design there, you know, he's been told that if he submits it again, it'll be fine, but he's got to pay the cost of doing it over. There's something wrong with this when a third-party jurisdiction prevents one of our residents from being able to do something within a timeframe, and if nothing else would be different, I think it really is important that we don't make that person pay twice for something that was completely beyond his and the county's control. And so stay tuned, because this is, I'm going to make copies of this stuff for everybody too, but I've talked to a few people about it. This is unbelievable to me, and I don't think it's going to be something that's going to happen a lot, but on cases like this, we should be able to waive fees on issues like this. To me, this is completely unacceptable.
Looks like the executive allows us with something to say.
Well, I do know a bit about this, and I do have some sympathy for the person that this is involved with. It's five and a half years ago that this applicant came in and got his septic permit. Provisions of code, I think, keeps that permit active for three years. There's a one-year extension that was granted on that. There's no provisions in code beyond that four years for granting any exemptions. In my position, and the staff's position is, is that we have the responsibility of following the law as it's written. We have allowed this, and as a matter of fact, I've had conversation as recently as this morning with John Walpers over at the Health Department with that. We...
We, we're encouraging the applicant to reapply. He does have to pay the fee. After a five and a half year period, the Health Department does have a responsibility that there hasn't been any new wells put in around the, around the property. It is unfortunate that the, the Lummi Tribal Water and Sewer District, I don't know if I'm saying that exactly right, did give them clear indication that they were going to allow him to hook up with it and at the very last minute, they did pull the plug on it. I, I do agree that in a lot of instances over the last year and a half, a little bit more flexibility in code would be nice, but I don't want to put myself into a position or put staff in the position of being criticized one way or the other. We, we need to take a look at the, at the law, the way it's written. We have fairly applied this to this gentleman and we're going to do everything that we can to make it as painless as possible. Unfortunately, he and other people within the community, when these permits expire and they go past the extension dates, have to reapply and pay the fees as, as they're moving forward. So, it's another one of those things through the 2016 comp plan, if, if council feels that they want to give the administration through the department some flexibility and leeway, I would feel very good about being able to grant that. But in this particular instance, very clearly, we have to say, unfortunately, it needs to be done this way. So, I, I've, I've been involved with this for three, four months. I, as I said, I feel for the applicant, but it is what it is in this particular instance.
Councilmember Brenner?
Well, first of all, we used to allow five or more years and we reduced it. So, that's one thing. The other, I, I think, of course, I, I think what we should have put in there and what, you know, what we need to put back in is giving, when, when you've got a property owner who, and there's not going to be any change to his septic design, it's going to be accepted and it's not, there's no change to it because nothing's changed around him and state law is still state law the way it is. So, when we have those things in front of us, I think there ought to be that kind of flexibility to extend it, you know, since we were the ones who reduced it to begin with.
Councilmember Brenner, would you be interested in bringing forward an amendment to that particular zoning code?
Absolutely.
So that we could give the Planning and Development Services the flexibility?
Yep.
Okay.
And I can make it nice and tight so people won't take advantage of it and it will do exactly what we want it to do.
All right. Thank you for bringing that up. Is there any other business? All right, how about reports from council members? Councilmember Crawford? Councilmember Cremmon?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm very pleased and honored to report that the president of the National Association of Counties has appointed me to two important committees. One is the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Steering Committee and I've also been honored by being appointed to the coveted Large Urban County Caucus, which is comprised of about 24 individuals that represent more than half of the country's population and I have the distinction of being the only member of that committee that comes from a county with less than a half million people. So, it's a real honor and I think it's very beneficial and productive for, for me to have that position and I'll do my best to try to, you know, get what I can for Waukesha County and our residents. So, I just wanted to report that to the council.
Very nice, very good. Councilmember Brenner?
Well, I had the pleasure of attending with Councilmembers Kirschner and Knutson, the Western Washington University Viking Athletes, their, their athletic department had a really nice dinner and auction and to raise money for, for their athletes and I guess the thing that most impressed me that night was the, the, I won't call it a speech, the comments given by one of the athletes. He was, this, everybody else was doing their thing and so professional and all this little, you know, whatever, very, very professional. He was speaking from his heart and he was so moving, I couldn't tell you, I mean, he was just so impressive. What a great bunch of kids over there, yeah, so.
Yeah, there's quite a high caliber of folks that put that on for us, students at Western, so that was fun. I have nothing to report. Councilmember May?
I just wanted to say that we had a light agenda tonight, but there's still a lot of work that goes on and today I had just had the chance to work with staff from IT and HR and our attorneys and I'm just continually impressed by the quality of our staff, top to bottom, and I just wanted to point that out to folks that we really are lucky, we do have great staff.
Councilmember Knutson?
Yeah, don't forget our council staff because they are the best.
Yay, council staff!
You know, I was going to say law enforcement, but then I didn't want people to think I'd been arrested today or anything like that, so.
Or actually that you hadn't because you said it.
I don't get it.
All right. Councilmember Weimer?
I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to miss next Tuesday's Health Board meeting, I need to be in Washington DC. The Secretary of Transportation has asked me to spend two days reviewing some extremely boring data, so I'm looking forward to that.
I'm going to be gone, too.
I'm going to be gone, too.
What?
Really?
I'm going to be here!
I'll be here. Oh, it's just Health Board, it's not our, it's not a regular council meeting.
It's still, you want to have a quorum.
No, no, I know, we want a quorum, but it's not like we can.
Ken's going to be here, then.
Do anything crazy.
And Bill's going to be here.
Councilmember Knutson, will you be here?
You better be.
Okay, I'll be here.
Yeah, all right.
And we, we did forget, you did forget to mention the fact that we were graced with the presence of the new Secretary of Health yesterday and yourself and Executive Laus and our health, Public Health Advisory Board, as well as WAHA, all got together and there's a lot of good things going on in Waukesha County as far as how we're dealing with what we're handed from a federal level and a state level.
What we're not.
It was encouraging to see us working on this stuff.
We're setting the bar. We are the people to follow in Washington, well, in the nation, actually. Executive Laus has got something to say.
I'd just like to add from Mr. Van Gloop's comments earlier that the Health Department is seriously looking at a mental health court. It's not just something that's been bantered about. We, we had a meeting, I was trying to find the exact date that we did, but a few weeks ago, there was a big group of us that got together and discussed the options and we ta, had the opportunity of tasking some people to look seriously at that and, and develop what a, a white paper of what that may look at, look like. So, I believe we do have some great opportunities to improve on what's already an awesome program as demonstrated by, by our court personnel. So, it's happening, we're working with City of Bellingham on that and we'll keep you up to date as we move forward with that.
Great. And Councilmember Cremmon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In view of the fact that it appears that three of the seven council members are going to be unable to attend the, the Health Board meeting next Tuesday, I'm wondering is it, would it be possible or too much of an inconvenience for the, that particular Health Board meeting be rescheduled? I, I just think that, you know, that, that's a significant number of us and they're only, we only get four of those reports annually and it would just be nice to have, you know, you know, most of us, if not all of us here, to hear that, that, because it's a very important report. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Cremmon. All right, any other, for the good of the order? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all.